I'd like to call the August 8th, uh, Madison City Council, Council, regular, uh, session two order. And tonight we have Pastor Richardson from Restoration Church here to lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, right now in the name of Jesus, we bless you, we love you, we honor you, we glorify you. And we ask you right now, even as we seek to see, um, to handle business in this city, we declare, Lord God, that your heart be felt, that your wisdom be released, that, um, that we are those that were operating your peace and your joy. And we thank you, Lord, right now for even giving us strategies to move forward, to take this place into the future in ways that we can't imagine by ourselves. So we thank you, we love you, we bless you. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Could you join me in a, in, in the pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get the roll call, please?
Okay. Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell? Councilman, President Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yeah.
Councilmember Seaford?
Here.
We have a quorum, so we'll move forward. Are there any changes or amended amendments to the printed agenda? If not, we'll move forward with the one printed, and I'll ask for approval of minutes from July twenty fifth.
May I have two approves?
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? If not, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye. Motion passes. There's no presentation or awards tonight. There's a couple of people that signed up for public comments. Um, we have Ms. Sarah Par- Parker that has signed up. If I could, if I could remind everyone, we have a three, a three minutes up, up there.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So Scott Newberry works for Hudson Alpha. Hudson Alpha receives four million dollars from the state education trust fund. Scott Newberry is on the executive team at Hudson Alpha. His team develops software to analyze genomic data, of which two million of the four million Hudson Alpha receives from the state education budget. I have concerns that there is a conflict of interest. Did city council investigate any of that? And I should state that Scott Alpha is now on our school board. He was the one that you all have just appointed. We now know that Greg Holsey's school board seat is open. Last time, I believe Alice Lesman was just appointed, uh, correct me if I'm wrong on that. She was appointed without a competitive process. What I'd like to know is will you open up this seat that Greg Holsey just vacated into a competitive process? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, ci- city council will, we will nominate somebody, our people, and then we'll vote, and majority vote will place that seat. So, I mean, it...
So you're opening it up?
I don't, I don't know what you mean when you say oh.
Open it up for a competitive process? You said, what did you say about voting? I'm sorry.
We, we will vote as a council on, on, on whoever's nominated.
Okay, so how, how are you nominating people?
Any, any of us can nominate a person or people.
So the, the public can put their names forward?
Well, we, 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 we will, um, not nominate a person, and then we will vote on whoever's nominated.
Okay, so anyone in the public, I guess I'm not understanding, anyone in the public can put their name forward and you guys vote?
No, ma'am. We, we, I, I have an opportunity to nominate someone, as well as everybody on the board can nominate some, someone.
Is that what happened last time for, um, Scott Newberry's seat? Cause we were all able to put our name forward, anyone in the community?
Yeah, and we interviewed, and then somebody not nominated him in a council meeting, and we voted for him.
Right.
He was the only one not nominated at that time.
Okay, okay.
I'll just add that previously Alice did interview for that seat. She previously interviewed for that seat. And then she filled the seat when, um, Councilmember Bartlet was elected.
How long ago did she interview before she was appointed?
It, it was within, within the year because Councilmember Bartlet took the seat in November, and Ms. Lesman also interviewed that spring for that seat.
And then she was appointed in November?
Uh, yes, when Councilmember Bartlet took the seat on council.
So it was not open again for a competitive process?
It is competitive. Anybody up here can nominate whoever they want to not nominate, and then we vote as a council.
So you can nominate...
Formal versus, I mean, there's a formal process when you're filling each year, and then when you're refilling a position, it can be done differently, and it sounds like it may be.
That's, I think, what I'm trying to ask.
I knew it was, so that's...
When you posted on webpage.
Yes, ma'am. We're not gonna run interviews again for this.
That's what I meant, okay. Now we're on the same page.
Yes, ma'am.
You're not gonna run interviews because you've already interviewed people?
We have interviewed.
So you're choosing from that pool?
Not, not necessarily.
Okay, all right. Are my three minutes up?
I mean, uh, anybody can be nominated, yes, but any, anybody out there can be nominated.
I, I think I understand you now, so, okay. All right, thank you.
Next is Ms. A- Ashley Dennis.
Okay, thank you for allowing me a couple of minutes of your time. Um, I have several issues that I want to address with you this evening, but they all do relate to education. Firstly and most importantly, which we were just discussing, I'm here to implore that on behalf of parents, to, that you post a position, uh, that's opening up for the school board seat for applicants to apply rather than select from your existing pool. But it sounds like you're not even just committed to just that pool, that you can nominate somebody else. Um, the candidates that you interviewed in April, uh, left little to be desired from the parents of whom I am speaking for. For the entire school year, we fought on behalf of our children for fundamental freedoms and even sought for your help in the matter on multiple cage, uh, multiple occasions. We even had numerous concerned parents apply for the school board seat left by Mr. Ferrera, all of whom were passed over for individuals who were not properly vetted or shared an understanding or sympathy for our concerns. In fact, you chose a candidate who was quite the opposite of our voice. So I'm asking you to please restore the confidence in your voters who put you in your seats and allow us to apply and show us that you are in fact listening to us, which leads me to my next issue. These flyers from Madison Forward regarding the city manager position were passed around at Discovery Middle School. Now, for two years, you have told us when we've come to you, city matters are separate from school matters. Even though you appoint our school board, for two years, you told us you could not intervene, you could not hold our board accountable because city business, city policy is separate from school business and school policy. And just a side note, I'm sure you all can grasp the fact that a system that offers no accountability to officials in power is a very scary, dangerous system. And it's flawed. Well, it seems that your city business has now encroached onto our school business, and so we need to hold you accountable. You either need to explain or investigate why these flyers are allowed into our schools. This requires you to acknowledge the concerns of your parents, and now you need to find, or now for my final concern, I'll leave that there. This is still a school-related issue. Um, I've been watching the progress of the little coffee shop at Gillespie and Waltreana. My drop off for my children centers on Gillespie and Waltreana. I'm a parent of four kids, and as I travel Gillespie and Waltreana, not only is traffic extremely heavy on both directions, many accidents happen there. In fact, I was the first on the scene of an accident that happened last night from a collision in the center of the intersection that sent a van actually into the embankment behind the coffee shop. I witnessed it, and I got out of my car to help assist in the emergency. Even I, in my lack of expertise, can see that this is a very poorly planned area. It cannot handle patrons during the morning commute. No dirt work has been done behind the coffee shop. There's no, I can't see where there would be an area for them to park. It looks like it's just gonna be a drive-through kind of coffee shop. There is no way people can merge off to get their coffee from either street and not impact traffic in the morning. My schedule does not allow for more minutes to get around coffee goers, and there's no way to get around that safely. So what is your plan, uh, to fix this issue? Because it's a safety issue, and like I said, there's just not, not properly planned. Thank you.
Ms. Dennis, may I have the flyer, please?
Sure.
If you don't...
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Does anyone else like to address councilor mayor?
Hi, my name is Angela Gary. My address is on file. I'm not really here to address council or mayor. I would like to say good evening to my friends, neighbors, and other citizens. I've been a Madison resident for longer than the council members, I would assume, have been alive. That's just my guess, but, you know, look at y'all, y'all are pretty young and, um, got snow on the mountain.
Thank you.
Um, my parents were property owners in Madison, Alabama for sixty-three years. I guess my father still is. He was buried in the city cemetery in May of twenty twenty-one. My mother, Nell Davis, was a loyal, dedicated city of Madison employee for over two decades. She still has friends that work here currently. They used to ask me about her from time to time when I would see them, see her friends in here in city hall because I'm a frequent, I frequent city hall. My mother will celebrate her eighty-seventh birthday this Friday, August the twelfth. It will be, also be the fourteen-month anniversary that she was abducted, kidnapped from her home. Ms. Nell, or Nellie Bean, as she is affectionately known, as her city friends call her, Cameron Rounds is one of them, um, has dementia. Dementia patient never improves, ever. Y'all all know that. That's not news. That's not a news flash. They lose something else with each passing day. I have not seen my mother, nor do I have knowledge of where she resides, like her sons do and others that live here and were one of my mother's, one of my parents' self-appointed voluntary caregivers. Friends and neighbors, I have done everything within my power to locate my mother in spite of unbelievable stumbling blocks thrown in my path and broken promises. I ask that each of you pray with me that I can find my mother and see her before she leaves her, this earth for her eternal home. It has to be better than the hell and confusion that she lives through on a daily basis. Pray for the softening of hearts of those involved and that can do something. And that I will be notified of her death if I'm unable to be reunited with her before she's called to heaven. I know of a few people here in this room that have prayed for me and my mother. I thank you. Please don't stop. We all must remember that every knee will bow before him for every deed, whether good or evil. Those that are rest- that are responsible for the stumbling blocks, broken promises and refusals to help, your knees are gonna bow also and they're gonna have big bruises on them. Madison is my hometown and my parents loved it here. My mother would want to return to Madison if I could find her. I wouldn't have to ask her. It's in her heart, the only home she's known since she was born in her early twenties. Please pray with me and thank you for allowing me to make this request.
Anyone else like to address council and mayor? If not, we'll move to the consent agenda and finance committee report.
Okay, our consent agenda is very short this evening. We have one item, uh, for approval as well as the regular and periodic bills. Finance committees review those and find those to be in order. And our next finance committee meeting will be on Tuesday, August sixteenth at ten AM. With that, I'd like to move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second. Is there any discussion? If not, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, presentation and reports. We'll start with Mayor Finley.
Alright, two quick things. One, several of us attended the state EMA summit last week. Uh, I know Jeff Birdwell was a big part of helping that occur. Well over two hundred people. We thank AdTran for allowing us, us to use that facility. But, uh, pretty importantly, you know, a lot of presentations that were made to discuss preparation, uh, uh, as far as any weather events that occur, but also going back to the pandemic, making sure if something, COVID rears its ugly head, something else comes in, we've learned how to do things correctly, what we can do better. Uh, and so I want to thank Jeff and, and, and his team for putting that on. Uh, Bob Baron was there, put an incredible presentation on in the morning for what he's done. So again, I think our community, working together, did everything we could to not politicize, um, and give information from that pulp, from the, uh, dais when we were giving those presentations to bring subject matter experts in. And then we also talked about the tornadoes of two thousand and eleven when it's a weather event. You know, with several of the things that have occurred, we, our community needs to be in the best shape it can be and that made a big difference. Thanks for what you guys are doing. Secondly, when it comes to governance transition, we've taken a little hiatus because, uh, the panel that was gonna talk was gonna be the mayor's panel. Unfortunately, Ron Anders coming out of Auburn had, uh, become, was sick that morning and ended up having COVID and thank goodness he didn't come up. But, uh, in talking, we had a, a, a big ten mayor's meeting last week. I have been in contact with Ron. And so we're looking to reconvene that group to get together and set it up. So within the next week, week and a half, two weeks, hopefully we'll have the time, date. And I do want to say when you tell us that there's a flyer from a group that's pushing to have that at the schools at different places, probably a little overzealous as far as what he, that group is looking to do. Again, our goal from here is to give the information that allows a community to decide, are there enough votes to put it on the ballot? And if it's on a ballot, then the community can figure out who's for it and against it and have, uh, have that. It is critical, I feel like, to try to let the community ask the questions that they want. They did a, they did it with city managers that were here and I thought they did a real goo- a real good job. I hope we can do as good of a job to share that information. But we will be working on that again to get that reset up and folks should be hearing about that in the next one to two weeks. That's all I have.
District number one.
Uh, yes, sir. I had a busy couple of weeks. I'd like to thank Mary Beth and her staff for bringing Madison on track, uh, into the council room. Uh, we had three different sessions, uh, where we were able to, uh, literally map out what we thought that the city should look like in the next thirty, forty years, uh, with Legos. It's been a long time since I played with Legos, but it was great to have a visual for, um, retail and industrial. So I want to thank her and, uh, the team for putting that on for us. And, and I know that there's several community members that are here in the audience that were also participating and I thank them for their participation. Um, I attended the, uh, Madison Police Advisory Committee meeting on the opioid crisis. Uh, was disappointed that there were only two members of the, of the, um, advisory committee here, but was still very thankful to chief, um, and the detective that put on that presentation was very interesting. Um, I was able to go to a presentation where the previous Kids Kingdom, Keepers of the Kingdom, gave us a check for sixty-five thousand dollars to go toward the new renovation. Uh, this was money that they had, seed money that they had left over from the build in nineteen ninety-seven that was smartly invested and made a fabulous return. Uh, I was driving there and I thought, oh, well, maybe it'll be ten thousand dollars. So we were all very pleasantly surprised and happy that it was sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, also attended the state of the county, uh, address with mayor and council member Spears. And wanted to mention on that preparedness, uh, for the summit, um, when you have a chance, go to, uh, your, uh, Google Play or App Store and download this app, Algo, A-L-G-O Traffic. And that is an app provided by Aldot and it has several features, two of which are construction areas in the city and you can't see it cause it's far away, but this is the entire state of Alabama and where construction is being held. And there's also cameras. We have one camera at the corner of Highway twenty and five sixty-five and it will, um, show when weather events are coming, but it also shows traffic. So I would encourage you to download that map and be prepared for, uh, traffic and construction, uh, with that regard. And that's all I have.
You said it was Algo Tracker?
Yes, sir.
The LGO.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Alright, district number two.
Okay, um, as Mara said, I went to the state of the county with her and I felt like I spent a lot of time with Paul last week. Sorry. But, um, anyway, one of the things that I did all by myself was I went to the Tarkog, um, meeting and, and we received a, um, a presentation on a program called Soul Smart, S-O-L Smart. And they have a website if you want to look it up and it is about energy initiatives and federal funding that the city can apply for, for grants for them, uh, from the federal government. And so then I took that information and I shared it with Steve Smith and he is going to get in contact with the, the Tarkog contact person and hopefully we can use that towards possibly some solar lighting at some of our fields, some EV charging stations or other energy smart, um, initiatives across the city. And, um, I say if we can get federal money to pay for something, we should.
Very good.
That's all.
District number five.
Uh, first, I want to congratulate the schools on open house. I attended myself, uh, manning a chess table at Midtown Elementary. They're our newest chess program, but I heard reports that, uh, the chess tables were overwhelmed with interest and so I'm very excited, uh, to see that. Uh, the, uh, nonprofit organization that I work with, the Madison City Chess League, has partnered with the Chamber of Commerce and we are collecting donated chess sets. They can be new or gently used. And then we are presenting them to area businesses that are Chamber members. And so if you're at Black Dog Grounds and Sound, you'll, uh, see one of our chess sets that we had dropped off. We've also dropped them off in downtown Madison in different places. So if you're a business owner and you would like a chess set, uh, I'd be happy to drop one off for you or the Chamber Director would be happy to do that. And that's all I have.
Very good. District number six.
Uh, as my role as liaison with the school board, I just came from the capital planning committee meeting that's looking at the next five years out. The numbers they are looking at are shocking. What it is gonna cost to build the next elementary school, what it costs to add the improvements to Bob Jones. It is amazing how much the cost of everything has gone up just since they finished journey. Um, it was eye-opening to me, but as I listened to them, they are doing the very best job they can to plan ahead so we can have the things we need in place because we know we are gonna have all these children coming in and they're doing the best they can to allocate the dollars in the best way they can. Um, because my first thought was what can we put off if things are so expensive right now? And they're looking at that, so when you hear about these things coming up, know that a lot of thought did go into it. Cause when you look at the next, you know, elementary school, which maybe will cost fifty million dollars. It's, it's the price of things right now. And, um, but I, I was very, um, I was very glad to see the amount of thought that they are putting into this project and how they're looking at the next five years going out. Um, I was very pleased to see that. Also, as far as the school board, I was at the, uh, institute day. Um, I've never seen so much excitement at eight AM in the morning as there was, uh, there was elementary school teachers first and then the high school teachers. They brought in a wonderful motivational speaker. Um, and I'm sure everybody that has kids, they've all heard the glad to be here. And it is, you left going, I am glad to be here. That's how exciting it was. This guy, he was the, um, he was a team lead for the Blue Angels. And everything with them was precise timing. But he taught three really good lessons. Two of them I want to share real quickly. One is to always build trust. And to build trust in those that you are working with, you have to be honest in what you're doing. You have to hold yourself accountable for what you do. And if you have, what you did wasn't quite your best, you fix it. And that is the way to build trust with unity within a group. And the second thing was to live gratitude. Hence, be glad to be here. Because if you really are committed to what you are doing and you're glad to be here, you will put your best effort into it and you'll do it in a positive way. And I thought those messages were excellent. I did want to share those. Um, I also went to the police citizen advisory committee, uh, excellent presentation on the op- the opioid crisis. Um, there have been several overdoses in the city of Madison recently. And it's a sad, it's sad that we are here. What, the main takeaway from I took from Mr., uh, from Detective Russ Owens. A lot of the reason people do get hooked is because they got pain within. And it could be from a trauma that occurred years ago, but that pain is still within them. They either get the drugs because they went to a doctor or they just get the drugs off the street because they're trying to kill that pain. And so I'll continue to advocate for more mental health, um, in our city. Everything from the school system to what we can provide for adults at every level. Because if we can get the trauma, we will stop people from dying and it really does come down to that. I know it's aren't happy topics, but they're important and it's what our city's looking at. And it's easy to say it's not happening here, but it is. Um, the next thing, a little happier topic, Madison Street Festival. It's only two months away. We are so excited. We've only got a couple of meetings left. We are fully booked on so many of the things. Uh, but they're still opening for parade, if anybody wants to participate in our parade. And also we are looking for volunteers. We cannot do this festival for thirty-five thousand people if we do not have good volunteers. So anybody that would like to be involved that day, please go to the website and you'll see the, the hook, the link for, um, volunteerism. Please volunteer. It is a great event. I have been involved for years and years. It's wonderful to be involved. So if you got the time, October first, please be involved. Um, also I'd just like to state that as far as the school board thing, I am totally supportive of as much transparency and openness that can be possible in this process. Um, I believe we owe it to the people to be as transparent as possible and that's all I have. Thank you. Oh, and I am glad to be here.
District number seven.
Yeah, I guess just a couple of points. I guess I give my, my understanding of filling the school board as well. I mean, I know, uh, obviously as soon as we understood Mr. Holsey's, uh, intentions that, um, you know, so we had, had the option to, to choose from those that have applied, just as we would normally. Um, and whether we wanted to open it back up and, you know, I don't think that decision has, has been made yet. And I, you know, at least my understanding was we were gonna discuss that, so. Uh, so from that standpoint, I'll just make sure that's out there, that we don't know what path we're going yet, whether we would open it back up for folks to apply or choose from the pool that we have. But, um, I can tell you, my personal thought is it's better to have something unfilled than filled with the wrong person. So, um, so my best forest company voice, that's all I have to say about that. Uh, I have not seen the Madison Forward flyer. I'd appreciate it if I could take a look at that as well. Um, I can say that is an independent group. That is not somebody from council. That is not a council or a city, uh, group. So, uh, from the standpoint of, um, you know, council or government putting into the schools, I can tell you that is not our group. So that is not the city or the government getting into the schools and using that as a, uh, a, a platform. So, um, and, and I can say too, from the standpoint of, of the path forward for that, uh, I agree, I think, with, with, uh, Mayor Finley's sentiment that, um, get the information out there. At the end of the day, if that's what the citizens want, that's an opportunity for them. If they deem, uh, you know, I say they, we're citizens too. Uh, if we as a city deem that we have enough people that wanna call for that as a referendum on a vote, then I think that's up to the citizens to make that decision based off of the information they have. And if the citizens decide to vote for that, uh, then I guess that's called democracy and we'll let that work. So. That's my two cents. Other than that, I have nothing, sir.
Greg, can I add one thing?
Yes.
One of the things I forgot to mention was that, um, we had, one of the places I was with Paul this past week was across the street at Jeremiah's, um, Italian Ice. They're a brand new business, a young couple. They are very excited to be in our city and their Italian ice is wonderful. They have both, um, regular and sugar-free. They have sorbets and do all kinds of specialty, um, like sundaes and stuff. But it's, it's right across the street in the, um, shopping center. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, there's no board or committee appointments tonight. Uh, we do have a couple of public hearings.
Thank you, sir. We have three, uh, alcohol public hearings this evening. Uh, the first is Taco Mama, T-M-L-L-C, doing business with Taco Mama. They've requested a restaurant retail liquor license for the location at one oh two St. Louis Street, Suite E. This is a new request for alcoholic beverages at this location. Uh, all departments have signed off and everything's okay for it to be considered.
Alright, I'll open the public hearing. If anyone would like to address mayor, council. If not, we'll close the public hearing and ask for motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, can I get the vote, please?
Who, who would?
John did it.
No, she got it. Kinda got it.
Whatever.
Jump ball. We're gonna get it.
So.
Mara and whoever you want.
Mara and Connie. John. My spin, spin, spin the bottom. Can I get a vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski? Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
And motion passes.
Thank you. Our second one is gonna be for, uh, TM Bar Incorporated, doing business as Prohibition at one hundred Moonshot Drive, Suite one twenty. This is, is well down there in the town Madison area. Uh, it's a new request for alcoholic beverages, and all departments have signed off, and it's ready to be considered.
I'd like to open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address mayor and council? If not, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, can I get the vote?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And for the last public hearing, we're gonna head to the north side of town. This is Target Shopping Center on Highway seventy-two. Uh, we have P, PS Mex Incorporated doing business as Bill Sandoval. Uh, they've requested a restaurant retail liquor license as well, uh, for the location at eighty-two seventeen Highway seventy-two West. Uh, they're going into the location where Buena Vista used to be, the closed in February of twenty-two, and, uh, everything's in order for this to be considered.
All right, I'd like to open the public hearing. Does anyone like to address mayor and council? If not, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move to approve? Oh, go ahead, John. John, go. John, go.
Move. Do I say it again, or? All right. You got a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, can I get, can I get a vote, please?
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
And motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Um, next is department reports, and we'll start with engineering.
Good evening. Um, just got one tonight, resolution number twenty-two-two-ten-R, uh, authorizing professional services agreement with SNME for MPDS construction services for Ball's Road improvements, uh, from Brownsbury Road up to about Gooch Lane in an amount of, not to exceed, twenty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, departmental budget.
Move to approve?
Second. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Um, I, I just have one question, and I'm sorry. Um, do you have a date, approximate date, when that will start?
Um, this one is tied to some Aldot funding, and so.
This year?
Yeah, or, we're hoping to start it this year, yes.
Okay.
Well, this coming fiscal year, anyway.
Okay, so in the, we can say the fall-ish, fall to winter, kind of. And you'll let us know so we can communicate it out.
There's gonna, there's gonna be more items to come, come up as we go.
That, that are tied to this? Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, this is like twenty-three thousand bucks. It might buy a shovel of asphalt.
This, this is just for permitting environmental, um, uh, permits.
Studies.
Uh, well, it's, it's, it's all about permitting, application, prep, uh, inspections, reporting, various things like that. This is just in the environmental part.
Sure.
Long way to go. This is a long project. It goes a long way. There's a lot of.
Moving parts.
Drainage things to consider, utility things to consider. The plans are being finished. I mean, it's a.
We just wanna be able to let our constituents know so they may wanna take an alternate route.
When we get closer, we'll, we'll obviously give you a better.
Okay. Well, Waltreana, County Line, I guess. Long alternate route.
So this part is just the environmental thing that we're voting on tonight?
Tonight is just the MPDS permitting, which is basically the environmental regulations that we have to follow as we go through the life of this project. This is something that'll be, uh, an ongoing payment, kinda thing that we do, uh, as we go. They're gonna be doing all our inspections and contractor verification, all our reporting, monitoring, record keeping, all that stuff.
Okay, 'cause when I was reading it, that's all I saw, so I'm glad that's all this is.
Yeah, yeah. If, if, if you flip back through the rest of the information, it kinda breaks down what it, what it is, and part of it is the actual fee itself that has to be paid, that's paid.
Thank you.
Any, any other, any other questions? If not, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Pa, Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Motion passes.
Um, just as a response to one of the citizen, uh, comments earlier, uh, this coming fiscal year, we've got several, um, intersections that we've identified that we're looking for improvements to do, three or four of those. One of those is Gillespie and Waltreana, so we're gonna be looking to do some, some improvements there, uh, in that area, in the vicinity of that coffee shop. And also, I spoke with, uh, one of the contractor supervisors for Hughes Road, just wanted to give you guys a quick update on that one. We're hoping to have the signal up there by, uh, east view over by the high school. Hoping to have that, uh, in September, ready to go in September. We're looking to have the project done hopefully by about Halloween, the whole, the whole repaving all the way through. We're looking, we're looking at maybe Halloween, maybe end of October to have the whole thing done.
The whole thing?
That's the goal, anyway.
Wow.
May, maybe ambitious, but do it weekend.
Very good.
I love the ambition.
Be ambitious.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
Anything else for me, you guys?
No, thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael.
Planning.
Your first item is resolution twenty-two-two-two-sixteen-r, and this is to set a public hearing for a rezoning request, a single-family lot about twenty thousand square feet on the south side of Forest Drive at one-thirty Forest, Forest Drive, and we're asking for you to set the public hearing on September twelfth. Just went to the planning commission, they're supporting it. There was no, uh, concerns expressed at the planning commission meeting.
Motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, can I get a vote, please?
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Motion passes.
Your next item is related to this same property, and, uh, you have proposed ordinance twenty-two-two-thirteen, and this is a first reading for the annexation of this property into the city of Madison. And, uh, when you have your public hearing in September, we'll ask you to, um, take action on the ordinance. Your next item is proposed ordinance number twenty-two-two-one-ninety-nine, and this is for a vacation of a utility and drainage easement that is, um, shaded on this property. This is at the northeast corner of Production Avenue and County Line Road. Um, you had a first reading at your last meeting. Uh, this property has been approved, uh, for a development. Um, there used to be two parcels here. They've processed a certified plat to combine the properties, and so they wanna remove the easements that bisected the property previously. All of the, um, different departments and utilities have signed off. We're asking for your approval this evening.
Move to approve?
Second. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
And motion pass.